Board of Supervisors to order, roll call please, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Tralka.
Here.
White. Schwartz.
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is received. Is proposed or amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All's in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, next item is, work session, discuss the possible action, discuss county preparedness uh, for COVID-19. I believe that the questions we are facing here today, um, it is my belief that we should be closing the courthouse to the public, um, and especially county offices. I'd like to hear from the courts if they have a new directive, um, in regards to what your needs still are for this facility. Uh, but I also believe that today is the appropriate time for Black Hawk County to issue the Declaration of Emergency.
Good morning, Board. Arnell Ernst, Clerk of Court for Black Hawk County. Lena is also here, and Brian Williams has the order. We did have an order that was loosening up a little bit of what our mandatory hearings are, but we still have mandatory community members that are going to need our services, whether it's by a criminal hearing, whether it's by a civil no-contact order application, an emergency situation, or whether it's a committal of mental health or substance abuse that needs to be addressed. We still need to have a way for the community to get to us and to be able to provide them those essential services.
Okay, so what I'm going to suggest is that we, we close the courthouse generally to the public, but they can answer questions as they come in the door if they're coming in for a court-related service.
Yes, if it would be possible if there would be somebody at the door perhaps to ask, "What are you here for?"
Yep.
And have the list of items that they would be allowed in.
Yeah, so if you could provide us that list of items that would be permissible under your operations, I think that that would be agreeable to us, and that they would just be greeted at the door. If they cite something that's on that list, they'd be allowed in.
Would there be just one person of contact then, Arnell, kind of addressing that? Or how would you see that working for all of you?
Well, the first question would be, would there still be security here? Would that be somebody that would have to be manned, would that position be manned by us?
I think we would be still keeping our security here under that.
So, security could do that interview-type questioning and then send them to our office. Um, we have really minimized our staff. We have quite a few staff working from home at this point. And so, we have a small group of people in our offices that would be taking those citizens as they come in.
Are there particular questions that you'll need addressed to really determine, I guess, for a security personnel to determine whether or not they should be someone that's allowed to come to your office or not?
Yes, and we could put that together quite quickly.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And Brian, could you?
Thank you. With both supervisory orders that came out on the 14th and then last night, just, I'll be practical about it. Although we have pending criminal matters, nothing's going to be contested generally for quite some time. Both of these orders loosen a lot of those requirements. Uh, one of the major concerns I would, I do have from a practical standpoint are the hospitalization hearings. Um, the decision had been made last week that we would have them here. Generally, we go to the hospital to have those hearings. The concern with those are that generally they always have an affiant and an applicant, usually family, that are ones making the request. So, they would need to be present in the courthouse as well. And whether, I don't know that we have the capabilities of doing a teleconference. That, again, both these orders address, we can do anything by teleconference that we want, essentially. And practically speaking, that, through all this, is the trying to work through how we address um, people off the street with regard to victims. They'd still be able to call, and we'll try to make it clear to the public that they can call us. And, again, regard, the decision you make, you know, worst-case scenario, I think I'll ask that, at a minimum, I have two attorneys, always on staff, and two staff members here. Um, and then what we do, the rest, I think we can work through. But, um, in terms of off-the-street, the real concern right now, I think, is hospitalization hearings, because the rest will be worked out over the telephone. And, you know, when that, when this wave hits us again late fall, or whenever these things catch up, it's not going to be fun, but for the time being, I, we're able to work through a lot of this.
Okay, so you could provide that same description and questions to be asked that could go on the list to our security guards? Okay.
And how soon would we get that list? I mean, I'd like the Board of Supervisors to have it within an hour and a half, if possible.
I can get that list to you quite quickly, as far as what the question should be for the security to ask when somebody comes to the door. Um, we could also provide that security guard a schedule of everyday hearings each morning, or at the end of the day before, so that they are aware of any critical hearings that are already set that need to be heard, and who will be coming to the door for those.
Because in essence, what we're doing is we'll triage individuals coming into the courthouse.
Right.
And I'll be down there. I'll augment the security guards to assist in this endeavor. But for county employees, I want to ensure that we do all we can to limit public exposure, eliminate public exposure. And, uh, I mean, we don't have much control over the state employees, but I also think we need to be able to roll at the punches, because I anticipate the state will make further changes in this as we gather more information. And I think the county needs to prepare to roll at the punches as well, based on the state's actions.
So, my proposal would be that, um, for county, each individual department and elected official, um, make their own determination of what level of services they deem are necessary to still provide to the public, knowing that the offices are closed to the public. What level of services you deem are still necessary, and what staff you deem as essential. Because it's my desire to just keep as many folks home as possible with full pay and no break in the pay. Um, and that could be done, your essential personnel, I would recommend doing on a shift basis, um, to spread that burden amongst your employees and your offices. But leave that up to individual department heads and elected officials of what level of services they think they need to still be carrying out during this period. And this would be initially for a period of two weeks.
Two weeks.
Of going from now until April 1st.
And one thing I will add, just in terms of the court, we're a work with court administration and the clerk's office, we're going to limit, I think, and Arnell had the idea that we probably just utilize one floor. So, we're not going to have much court going on, so we can
Well, that's good.
Utilize that, and I think the potential for clerk's office, third and first floor to combine, so.
Okay.
We had talked about just utilizing the first floor. We've got the courtroom there, we've got staffing that can be there, so we're not contaminating perhaps the entire courthouse.
Right, yeah.
So, we can, in essence, shut off the lower level
Mm-hmm.
and the second and third floor.
Not to staff.
Not to staff, but to the public.
To the public, correct.
Yes, yes. Okay, that's good.
All right.
Is there?
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to ask if there was anyone in the audience that saw there was any issues with that, with their departments.
Good morning, Sandy Smith Recorder, and maybe this is just a question for Debbie, but I do need some clarification, Chris, on everyone getting paid. So, that's fine, but do they need to use any of their casual or sick time? Okay, so, anybody who had vacation scheduled during that time would just be off without using that?
We, Debbie's here.
And I can talk to Debbie about this.
I would, I would
I have those cases, so.
I would be inclined just to say, say no, they're not dipping into their vacation time
Okay.
at this, um, just so we're treating people as
So, we will just get some clarification on all that as we need it as it comes up.
Let's say what Debbie has to say.
That's fine, Tom.
We're not breaking any county policy here, so.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you hear from the H.R. Director.
Yes, moving on to H.R. Director. Thanks, Tom.
Well, as always, there are complications to everything, so I think I would have to have a little more information from the departments to know what their exact scenarios are typically. Um, you know, this is spring break, so we have already had people off. It would depend too on when they're going to start, if you're going to, you know, start having essential staff, because you might need some wrap-up time before you could let people go home. So, I, until we really know how many people we're talking about and that, you know, for up to two weeks, I mean, that's going to be, we do have some people off already, probably on FMLA and sick time and that kind of stuff, I think those are probably, should remain the way they are, I guess. But it probably would take, we might need to kind of discuss that and come back with a plan. I don't know that I have an exact answer for you off the top of my head, so.
I have a starting point.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, you know, and I'm just, sometimes I just think out loud, but we need to take care of our employees. Our employees need to take care of their families. Uh, I would be in favor of some sort of policy that, where we give them 14 days, where they don't need to draw anything from their bank, because we have newer employees, younger employees, who have young children, they're concerned about their children, their children aren't in school, they're concerned about daycare. We need to allow them to be with their families and take care of their families. We don't want them worrying about financial challenges. So, 14 days, we pay them for, paid administrative leave for 14 days. Department heads, uh, it's tough to maintain consistency amongst departments. But these are trying times. I trust all of our department heads, paid and elected, do what they think is right.
And that would be staggered, or would that be, I mean, if, like, say you need five of your staff now, but next week you only need three, I mean, are you going to start it for whenever that person decides to start staying home? Those would be questions we don't kind of want to work through, I guess. Or are you just going to define a period saying?
I, I, I think we're just defining a period
Okay.
that for these next two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Any essentials, any non-essential staff that's staying home during this time, because their department head said they should, will just stay home with them?
Yes, and it's up to
That would be the easiest thing to do, frankly?
Yeah. That's what we want to, and it's up to those department heads of how they determine their essential staff and how you possibly, you know, use shifts so that it's not the same folks every day or even all day. Um, that discussion would be up to them.
And I do think that's an issue, I think, for every department that probably weighs heavily, is that, how to be fair and equitable to your staff. And as there are individuals that are going to be maybe more essential than others and would be almost directed to stay here and be here every day, and others at home, not working at all. So, um, I don't know if shifts or however people are looking at that, but we're, yes, wanting to empower, I guess, our department heads and elected officials to work through some of that.
And I think we'll need to think about, you know, if those people that have had that two weeks, are you going to also, because it could be a scenario where somebody even, you know, during that time, maybe they come in contact, who knows? They maybe needed a 14-day quarantine after that, or if they have a quarantine because they've been, you know, around somebody, or they're taking care of somebody, and then they get sick. So, those are things I think we kind of need to be thinking about as well, and maybe develop a plan for that.
Yeah, I know, if we could be working on that stuff still in the coming days, but I think that the immediate action today is that the, that the
Non-essential staff.
Yeah.
Dan, what was, Dan, what was, was that you that proposed that 14 days?
I did, yes.
What was, what's the plan then beyond that?
Well, we'll roll at the punches. We take this, for weeks, I've been saying we need to take it day-to-day. The information is constantly coming in. I think we need to plan regularly scheduled meetings to change with the times, and then we can decide.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think we need to schedule a meeting for nine o'clock tomorrow morning, uh, but we can always say it's not necessary.
Right, and that means it's already been posted.
Yeah, so we can change with the circumstances. To answer Debbie's question, we roll at the punches. If we need to extend it out, we extend it out. I think it's important for the employees to know that they are going to be cared for, and they can take care of their families.
Your motion is what then, on Twitter?
Uh, allow department heads to have the discretion, department heads and elected officials, or department heads to have the discretion to identify who is essential, who's not essential, that, uh, we put employees on paid administrative leave uh, so that they have a steady, consistent, and constant income during these trying times. And after two weeks, we reevaluate that position.
Okay, so we're going by a date then, from
Yes.
Today, 14 days, and then reevaluate it then?
Yes.
Yeah, reevaluate.
Okay, I, I, I think that's fair. I can live with that.
And then, just add that the courthouse remains closed to the public at that time, as does, leave our VA office. Um, the Health Department has indicated a necessity to still keep functioning, and so, um, we're not going to touch them in this resolution. This, but the VA office would be included in that, and they've already taken those steps.
Now, we're going to have the, everybody still, the employees that are working in the board, we're still going to come through the front door, correct?
Well, I think we need to be flexible on that. I think people need to use their best judgment and decide which way they're going to come in.
Well, where are you going to have security at, the front door?
Well, I even considered eliminating security altogether, because they have families as well. Uh, we're limiting the amount of people coming into this building. I plan on being here as frequently as I can.
I have another question with regard to this 14-day leave. I did talk to Billy from Payroll today, and I know she's mentioned it to Grant. Just wondering if you'd be interested at all in kind of keeping track. Uh, we could set up special payroll codes for, like, COVID leave. Um, COVID leave for unpaid, or for paid administrative leave and COVID sick, if you'd be interested in that. And it might come in handy later, if you know, wherever.
Yeah, no, I think that would be, that would come handy, especially if we ended up in a number, in a situation where a number of employees did become sick, and we want to, um, examine ways that we can further help their family out.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
Uh, back to Dan's thing there, uh, I think Rory should be checking with Permar. We can't tell security whether they're going to, they may want to work. I would think we'd want somebody down there yet to help address the public if they come to the door that we're closed, or you can have a sign. But the fact remains, we can't dictate whether they're not. Will we have a contract with them? And, uh, because we're not going to pay their salary to come on home.
Right. No, and I do, we'll have Rory come, but I do believe that as long as we have a necessity of the courts to come and access, that we, that we need to keep those folks there, but
Yeah, I do too. I honestly think we should, and they'll probably want to be down there. I mean, it'll be a little slow, but I think we should still keep our employees coming through that front door with the security there. I don't care about going through the machine, I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm.
I, we need to maintain them there unless that company comes back and says, "He's pulling his people off."
Right.
Then we can meet and talk about what we're going to do beyond that.
Right, and that's, we would go with that day-to-day as well, because, you know, I, I want to ensure, we have a contract with the security company. Uh, I want to ensure they get paid. But if they limit their services or the services they're providing, then there's a determination, I guess, they'll make, but, uh
On behalf of the state and the state employees that would still remain here, we would request that there would be some type of security, just so that our staff is not vulnerable to anything that could potentially happen without
That's all I need to hear.
We need to maintain security.
Yep.
Yes, Grant?
That's all I need to hear.
Are there any thoughts about having, um, a healthcare professional, a nurse, or somebody at the door that would ask questions about exposure and take temperatures?
I'm certainly open to that. I'm worried about the availability of healthcare professionals at this point, and whether we're pulling them away from, uh, competing with more pressing needs that come. But I, I would certainly love if we were, if we had, you know, one of the no-touch, um, temperature readers for foreheads, and I think that's a discussion we can have with Permar, possibly if they're able to provide those services. Um, or if they, if folks thought there was, um, a healthcare provider that we could employ to do that, that we're not taking away from
Well, I wonder if the Health Department could provide us with screening questions?
Oh, for sure.
Certainly they could have this
Four, five, six screening questions?
And those questions already exist, they're being used at the EOC.
Yeah, they are.
That gives us consistency.
I think, I think that's something that's worth, um, Mr. Veder is still looking, looking into and adding if we can figure it out. Yes, yes, Debbie?
As far as taking the temperature, I sent you guys some information yesterday from Mailers &amp; Cooney, and that was one of the questions, can an employer measure the body temperature of an employee who is suspected of being ill? And it says, "Based on prior guidance from the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission about how employers may respond to a pandemic, the EOC considers the measuring of an employee's body temperature via medical examination under the ADA. However, EOC has previously noted, if a pandemic becomes widespread in the community as assessed by state or local health authorities, or the CDC, then employers may measure body, employees' body temperatures." So, there are some, you have to just be a little bit careful about that.
And one thing I'm concerned about
Can we maybe have that be one of the things that we update on tomorrow's meeting? If folks could look into that, Pete, if you could look into the legality of that as well, and we can look into who could potentially provide that.
And I'm worried about the social contact.
Mm-hmm.
Is my concern.
I think, I think the main thing is to do is pass the budget to close the courthouse. Uh, it sounds like all departments have a plan. And if we need to take care of anything else, we can do it tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so, so we could, can we call a vote on Dan's motion with, as, um, if you want to restate it again?
Boy. You can, or I can too.
Or, Grant, if you'd like to state it as you understand it?
Yeah.
What I took down when Dan was saying it was that elected officials and department heads would determine who is essential and non-essential personnel, and those that are non-essential would be put on 14 days paid administrative leave, and we would reevaluate that in two weeks. Then you were, uh, I think, maybe adding some language about closing the courthouse. Did you want it all in the same resolution?
We can do it in the same resolution, or I say let's just do it in the same resolution.
Yeah.
That during that two-week period, the Black Hawk County courthouse and the Veterans Affairs Office uh, are closed, uh, to the public, um, with the exception of folks doing business with the courts.
Until further notice.
Yeah. Say yes, until further notice.
Yes.
I believe essential court functions is the language that most other
Okay.
We're open for essential court
Essential court functions. Can we have that language reflected, Mr. Veder?
Essential court functions, and then, and Tom said until further notice, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yes, Debbie?
I also sent you in that email yesterday was with regard to if you want to waive the cost of the tests. So, if you want, I don't know if you want to consider that, if somebody actually from our, that's on our health insurance, is tested for the virus, do you want to waive that and have the county pay that at 100%?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, do you want that included in this resolution?
I think that should be a separate resolution.
We'll do a separate resolution after this, so we've got, so let's, if there's no further questions, can we call the question on this resolution? Do we have a second?
No.
Again, it's
Seconded. Okay, roll call please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Okay, it sounds like there's, supervisor Tralka, would you like to make the motion on waiving all co-pays related to COVID-19 testing for county employees?
Yes, if they test positive, we waive the co-pays, the county covers the cost of the co-pays. Uh, that is my resolution.
Would you accept a friendly amount, just if they're tested period?
Tested period, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, let's, uh, say it over again.
Grant, you're going to confuse me. Uh, for any testing for county employees of COVID-19, the county will cover the cost of the co-pays in regard to that testing.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Uh, roll call please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Okay, and now, we have, um, issue, I do believe that now is the time for Black Hawk County, um, given that we do have a positive, um, test result here in the community for COVID-19, for the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to issue our emergency declaration.
I'll make a motion to do so.
Seconding.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Roll call please, Mr. Veder.
Uh, hopefully you're going to give me more specific language on how that's supposed to read.
Yes, um, so I could read this out right now.
Why don't you?
"Black Hawk County is an imminent threat or has suffered from the effects of COVID-19 that is expected to happen or occur on, I will say, March 17th, 2020, causing damage to the public and private property, disruption of utilities, within an adverse effect on commerce, local government, and public health and safety. Therefore, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors has declared a state of emergency authorized under Iowa State statute, and will execute the expenditure of emergency funds from all available sources, and invoke mutual aid agreements and request assistance from the state of Iowa."
Basically, what it does is allow us to apply for funds if there's any funding out there.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, yes. So, we moved, uh, roll call please.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. All right, is there any, so, um, one thing, so we'll want to, I know most department heads have already gotten us this information, if it's changed, we want to post centrally on our website what services you are still providing in your office, and how folks can access those, whether it's by mail, phone, uh, or the internet. And, uh, I believe that we will meet again tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. to go over some of the questions about potential health screenings for folks coming into the courthouse. And so, we'll examine those questions today in logistics. Are there any questions that department heads have, that Pete has? Yes.
I want to bring to your attention a provision of the Iowa Open Meetings Law. As you will note, this from this communication from Grant a few days ago, you can have a session where some or all of the members participate electronically or by phone. However, you have to have, uh, the place where that is, where that is occurring, this boardroom, open to the public, so the public that may be interested in that has an opportunity to go in there. So, I know that creates just a little bit of a difficulty here, but it is, if you want to protect yourself from the actions that you're taking, you should include that language. Some or other, you're going to have to, uh, control the, uh, public that comes to that meeting, if you have anybody that comes in at all, but I do think that that's going to be a necessity.
I think the solution is easy. When we post our meetings, we make it clear on the notice that, uh, the boardroom will be open for the public to attend, along with essential services for the state.
Very good.
So, so I guess we'll, while board meetings are happening, that'll be one of the criteria questions that we give to the courthouse security. Um, if they answer that they are coming to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting, that will be one of the things that allows folks in.
It won't be a huge number.
No. I want to, I mean, the department heads, I mean
Public, now is not the time to start coming, so.
And generally, in the past, it was encouraged that department heads attend these meetings, but I think we're to a point now that if you don't need to be here, if you can communicate with us electronically, telephone, whatever, do so. There's no need for you to be here from this point on.
And, and I would like, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Just keep in mind, we have a budget hearing next week, and potentially, we could have people at the annual budget hearing.
Yeah, and, um, we have been given the option, I guess, by the state, I'm not sure if you're aware, Tom, to extend that period, but I think it's probably best that we just go ahead and
Yeah, we need to wrap that up, be done with it, and we won't have to worry about it.
Yeah, because we, we're all, I think, in agreement with where the budget's at, so it should be a pretty, pretty quick process. Um, I do want to communicate, you know, one of the reasons that we're taking this step of keeping our, uh, employees' paychecks going is because there's already going to be a big economic hit, um, for this community. And as one of the major employers of this community, we didn't need to be one of the entities adding to that, but that our, that our employees have a, I think, a special obligation to, when we can, um, support the local businesses in this community, they're going to be really suffering um, for a while.
One more
We have a meeting, we're going to schedule tomorrow, but at 9:00?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, our question for Pete, I mean, we need to be
Oh, yes, yes.
Realistic in what is to come, who knows? We don't want to spread panic, we don't want to, we just want people to take it easy, take it day-to-day. But quite literally, what if only two board supervisors are available to make decisions in regard to the operations of the county?
You need three, right? Need to have a minimum of three board members to make, uh, a decision. So, and the three members need to be present for the meeting, either electronically or by phone, or present here in the room.
Does some, like, FaceTime count? I mean, uh,
Uh, if, if
A virtual attendance?
Three is three.
It means you can attend electronically, and if you choose to go by Facebook or something like that, so long as you are there by phone and participate in the vote, that's sufficient.
Gotcha.
All right, do we have anything else? Yes, yes.
Just for the public, since all of this is going on, there was a proclamation yesterday by Kim Reynolds for vehicle registrations and that. It's extended. Any renewal of a vehicle 60 days prior to now, through April 16th, there's no interest, you're not expired. New vehicle transfers, there was a limit within 30 days if people are buying vehicles from individuals. The law says 30 days. That was extended till April 16th. And also, purchase from dealers, they had 45 days to get the title work done. That's been extended till April 16th also. So there is some in the works as far as property taxes, that has not been declared. And I'll put that on the website as that information comes through because I'm sure there'll be a change on that also. So just
That is, that is in the newspaper today, what
Okay.
About your driver's license.
But you'll have staff to answer questions too, so.
We'll have, with this, we'll probably be just down to essential
Yep.
that will be coming in. So I'll, we'll, we'll deal with all the questions that we need to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Has anybody else wish to speak before we adjourn? Yes, Debbie?
Your question, so this leave, does this start tomorrow or when?
Immediately.
Immediately. Okay, today?
Yes.
Two weeks.
And then just to clarify, I, I can email you. You will tell us how to code that on payroll, because payroll's coming up this week.
They're going to have a call.
That's the first question.
All right, very good. Uh, I, yes, Grant?
I just want to clarify, is somebody from the board going to discuss with Debbie's office and, and my office about how the, the leave is going to be handled in terms of questions that Debbie had before?
Yeah, I think if Chris and I meet with Debbie after this meeting, how does that sound?
Yeah, 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 whatever remaining questions, we'll
We'll get it clarified.
And I believe we will send, someone will be at the EOC this afternoon in case they, I mean, this information's already getting out to the public because I appreciate Tim, your work this time, and so, I truly mean that. But someone will be at the EOC this afternoon in case they want us to speak at that, that press conference as, as well, just to
Sure, if we need to.
inform people, but
I think several of us have talked about that
Yeah.
primarily for the direction
Yeah.
Public health information.
Yeah, look, Grant, who's the communication officer for the county?
Lynn Cloverdance.
I thought it was Grant Veder was our
No, I don't think I am yet. Abby, Abby Keenest, she's gone? Okay. Abby Keenest, and she's gone.
I think we delegate that to NAFISA
Yes.
who takes direction from the board.
Well, for those decisions, I think, for the discussion on the, you mean for the press conferences?
Yeah, and we can feed her regular communications and updates. Chris has been infrequently
I don't, I don't know if that's part of that emergency plan the county adopted a few years ago, but I thought we had a communication officer in place.
Do we need a
It goes with the badges that we have that